Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. Wednesday, July 17. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not to the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey the orders of the chair. Roll call.
Becker, Crabtree, Osborne.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Merk.
Here.
Nicklin.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Osborn, you do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Public Communication item is for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than the scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally refer to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action or non-agenditized items can be taken at this meeting. Consent calendar is approved by a roll call vote on one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar and considered a separate item.
Mr. Chair, I noticed, I think it's probably a typo, but on page seven of the minutes, my comments refer to requiring banner permits for for-profit businesses, and I think that should say not-for-profit businesses.
You going to approve the minutes of the previous commission meeting?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I, so that sentence, if I'm reading the sentence correctly, it says Commissioner Merk offered a bit of historical background noting that when the sign ordinance was going through the process, it was not the intent of the commission to require banner permits for, and that's where you want not-for-profit businesses?
Correct.
Okay.
Just for for-profit businesses.
Got it.
Thanks.
Anything else? So it can have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes with the changes.
I'll second the motion.
Osborne.
Aye.
Foster.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Aye.
Nolan. Yes.
The municipal council Planning Commission liaison report. Representative Catherine Lee, I don't see her here this evening. Commissioner Nolan, do you report on the last meeting?
Yes, I did attend the meeting on Monday night, and it was actually a joint meeting of MAC and the Highway 33 Improvement Committee. And basically, that's what we talked about the most was the Highway 33, and I'll just give a couple highlights. They had a representative from the California Highway Patrol there, and then also two engineers, I think they were both traffic engineers from Caltrans District 7, Los Angeles office, and then also a Caltrans representative from the Ventura office. Her name is Jan Whitcomb, and she sounds like a very nice liaison, so if we have any issues, we can call her directly. But basically, they said the biggest challenge on Highway 33 was distracted drivers, and the most serious accidents were caused by motorcycles, and 70 percent of those are on Highway 33. And they do have some, and most of the accidents are on the weekends, and there are also some issues with commercial vehicles on the weekends. I'm just kind of going through my notes trying to cap this, but let's see what else here. They most recently finished the resurfacing and striping of 33, which everyone was happy about. And then what was interesting, there were several members from Casita Springs who brought up the issue of not only traffic, but the speed going through Casita Springs, and they actually came up with a motion to have Caltrans do a study in Casita Springs, and if they felt it was feasible, they would put in motion-censored signage that would actually reflect the speed that vehicles were going. So it's not something that the CHP could actually take it off of, but it was more to alert drivers and the local community who happens to be walking or trying to get out of their driveway, just to give them a sense of what was going on. So, and then the CHP officer did mention that the three elements of safety were education, enforcement, and engineering. So of course, Caltrans comes in with the engineering, and then CHP with the enforcement, and then both of them with education. So that was the bulk of the discussion that night.
Thank you. The next meeting's August 19, and Commissioner Osborne, you are down to attend it.
Oh. Well, you know the agenda on the council right here. Okay. I didn't know that.
Tonight's meeting, there's no disclosure of site visits. Just go past that one. Item number two, the presentation of the biodigester project. We have Mr. Gerard Kapukcik, Kapusik, sorry, and Mr. Bill O'Brien to give us a presentation this evening. Thank you.
Can you all sit? Let's get over here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. It's my pleasure to bring you a overview of the biodigester feasibility study, and for purposes of this presentation and the study, the project is the study, which gives us the flexibility to think outside the box and vision what might be, and not the responsibility for carrying out the project and what will be, which we come forward if the value that the study identifies is viewed as something that members of the community and decision-makers and regional governments, or governments dealing with regional resource issues find value therein. So let me just start off by saying that Rob asked I'd just briefly identify what we do in Watershed Protection District in my position. I manage a strategic decision support group, which is a group of two individuals and myself who are cognitive artists, and we work closely with the Watershed Protection District Director to coordinate the enterprise preparation and submittal of various strategic initiatives by the district, including the district's budgets, our capital improvement documents, grant funding applications. I also happen to serve as the Levy Certification Program Manager for the Watershed Protection District and manage a series of special project deliverables, this study being one of them. So that's what I do and what we do at the Watershed Protection District. As far as this study, how did we get involved into something that, from the point of view of some individuals, might be a solid waste issue, but in fact is a multiple, multidisciplinary, multi-natural resource issue? You can, the answer to that question really is the distinguished gentleman to my left and my rear area here, and Bill O'Brien was successful in convincing the Ventura River Watersheds Council, which is one of the three watersheds councils under which a variety of agencies and stakeholders countywide deal with integrated water management planning, to appeal for a state grant under Proposition 84. And the council was successful in agreeing to that and proposed to the county that we take on stewardship role of managing the study contract. And the state awarded the Watersheds Council $75,000 grant, which we matched with at least $25,000 in local in-kind services worked by the district and its staff, and Bill, and the Waste Energy Group, and he'll talk a little bit more about that. So having said that, I will say what I said to the Ventura River Council. If you find quality and value from the study, you can thank me. If you don't like the results, you can blame Bill. Having said that, I'll run through this very quickly and be happy to answer any questions either during the course of the presentation or at the end at your discretion. So let me just run basically through that. Normally, we'd be joined by AECOM, and particularly Ryan Gallagher, who was our consultant engineering partner. The county went through an RFP process and selected AECOM to help us do the engineering and technical evaluations necessary in the study, and I serve as project manager. I'm going to briefly overview the results of the study, and there were essentially five stages to the studies. Four technical memorandum, each was a building block towards an integrated, connected report with an executive summary, which is ultimately the deliverable that we've committed to the state to discharge in consideration for the state grant. And talk a little bit about some next steps, and Bill will talk more about potential next steps in his presentation, and then be happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, for purposes of tonight's discussion, the project is the study, and it's important to understand the purpose of the study, and by understanding the purpose, recognizing what it is not. The intent here was to look through a focused feasibility study on the potential use of organic wastes in the Ventura River watershed, and technologies, particularly the biodigestion technologies and complementary material handling processes designed to convert these local organic wastes, including horse, cattle, manure, green waste, and food waste, into energy and other useful byproducts in Ventura River watershed. And there's lots of different public policy and natural resource management stewardship decisions or reasons to evaluate these various types of natural resources and management challenges. But the most important is, as a society, when we talk about wastes, that's, to me, a sort of an archaic term. Waste is really nothing more than a resource that has just yet found a useful home. And all of these natural resources, as we inherit them, as we process them, and as we discharge the byproducts, potentially have a more useful home than we're currently handling them. State of California now has an aggressive goal of reaching 75 percent recycling by 2020, building on the 50 percent recycling goal by 2000 that was embedded in state law. And that's the next level of challenges that we as waste management and public agency professionals have to grapple with, and more broadly, the community has to grapple with. So the purpose of the study is, can we find a specific focused application of technology to deal with parts of the waste streams that have the beneficial results of energy, byproducts, and to tackle other waste problems or other natural resource problems? And I think the study meets that deliverable requirement, but it'll be up to you and the broader community to determine whether that's in fact the case. As I indicated, there were five study deliverables. Technical memorandum that served as a building block for the technical engineering evaluation of the problem, the question, and the opportunities, as identified here, feedstock summary, technology and site analysis. A conceptual site plan and some high-level discussion of if we were to execute a project on this conceptual site plan, what would be the environmental review and project delivery considerations? And then determining the feasibility of that project, what would be a potential implementation plan? How would you execute it? And then finally, a draft final feasibility study report, which rolled it all together and which, I understand, has been forwarded to you, and that's where we are in terms of the process. We did engage with sort of iterative loops with the communities. We had three workshops at points in, the continuum is identified here, the first in July of last year, which talked in general about the purpose and where we would go. Then in September, on the first two study deliverables, and then in February, on the last two study deliverables, or the technical memorandum deliverables. And then we are here making presentations in terms of the draft final feasibility report, which is out on the street and which we will be accepting public comments on prior to finalization at the end of this month. Our first technical memorandum dealt with the questions of feedstock data types and characteristics, and by specific design, we wanted to be conservative, focused, and geographically contained. In other words, we asked ourselves the question, with the feedstocks that are generated, the potential feedstocks that are generated in the Ventura River watershed, would a project be feasible? And that feedstock analysis is summarized in this bar chart here, and we determined in terms of the analysis that there were reliable, a high confidence reliability of about 50 waste tons a day of various organic feedstocks that could support a facility like We also recognize the challenge to the community of the emerging TMDL regulations by the state and regional water quality control boards regarding nutrients that are currently through storm runoff, entering into the Ventura River and creating some significant challenges and problems. And so while that was a catalytic event, that wasn't the main reason for the study, but it was something that we recognized needing to be addressed and perhaps accelerated the need for completion of the study and potentially its value to the broader public policy community to deal with multiple challenges. So the energy potential that is resident in the feedstocks that identified is identified here, about just under 2 million kilowatt hours per year, which is roughly the equivalent to energy required for 200 homes per year. There are portions of the waste streams that are subject to existing collection methods through primarily Harrison Industries under contract, in this case, to the city of Ojai, and then more broadly in the unincorporated area to the county of Ventura. And there are portions of the waste stream, particularly horse manure, that is not subject to that regime currently. But ultimately, if TMDL regulations come down from the state in this watershed, similar to ones that came down from the state in the Cuyegus Creek watershed, folks who have the creation of or the byproducts of these wastes are going to have to deal with their current process of them not being handled to the satisfaction of the state regulatory The next question had to do with the technology analyses, and the chart on the, or the graph on the right here pretty much identifies the inverted funnel approach. We started broad, and we worked our way down. So we looked at companies with proven track records of handling dry, and actually, let me just go back, I missed a point. The composition of these feedstocks in terms of wet and dry is identified on the right-hand side of this, and for the most part, these are relatively dry organic feedstocks, which does not mean that they can't be handled through this process, but every process that handles biodigestion that has a certain amount of liquids involved in it, or processed water facilitates the methane production and the efficiency of the biodigestion project. So there is a challenge about the wet-dry feedstock that's something that we, that's important in terms of how this project is feasible, and you'll see that play out in a later slide. So we looked at various technological approaches. We, through AECOM's reach, we were able to identify 11 companies that had a significant experience with dry anaerobic digestion technologies. A good chunk of them were from Germany, where this technology has not only been around for a long time, but has been perfected at a distributed small level, and in particularly with horse and cattle. So we found a considerable amount of opportunities there with companies, but we had to work our way down to something more manageable than 11 companies to identify. And we shortlisted through the process three firms as most feasible, and two of those firms had existing facilities. More food waste and processed water, as I indicated, is going to be needed to maximize the efficiency of a project like this. And we looked at a couple of elements of the existing organic waste stream. Green waste was avoided due to its woodiness. Casita's municipal sludge was not used, both because it's a small volume and it's not particularly helpful to this process. And we looked primarily at the horse manure in the bedding, which has both a solid and liquid component. Food waste potentially is, would be a helpful additive because of its wetness and its methane potential, methane generation potential as well. So we were able to identify a firm that would help us then move to the next discussion of the precise technology and site analysis. And this slide summarizes some key criteria and why they are key in both the technology and the analysis of an ideal site for a project like this. And I think it's pretty straightforward, both the relationship with the criteria and the description, except to say this, and this will be self-evident in the next slide. A facility like this that tackles multiple waste streams and deals with multiple problems implies co-location with another facility, where you have maximization of synergies. And that will be seen when we get to a potential conceptual site plan. So the third technical memorandum was to look at that conceptual site plan and do some high-level analysis of the kind of framework of environmental review that would be necessary to look more deeply at the environmental challenges, constraints, and opportunities, and then also to talk about, well, how would you do this? How would you deliver a project like this? How would you construct it? Who would own it? How would it be operated, and in what sense? And so that was really the focus of our third technical memorandum, and we worked with Organic Services, which was the firm that finally worked our way through on the funneling analysis, as a potential technological provider and a resource to help us perfect the site plan, the review, and the project delivery. The conceptual site that was identified, sort of the ideal site, given the volume of the waste stream in the watershed, the conditions of operation, should not be dissimilar to you, and by this slide, it's not suggesting that it will be there, but it's proximity to the Ventura Avenue Water Treatment Plant and then the PPC run by the county. It's essentially just south of that area, about a two-acre parcel, and this is a comfortable footprint for a project of this magnitude and given the stream resident in the Ventura River watershed. And so this would be sort of a conceptualization of what an ideal site would look for under the constraints and opportunities in the Ventura River watershed and the waste streams created therein. We then looked at probable construction costs, summary here, and we were very conservative in the sense that it is better to err on the side of more unknown knowns at this early stage, and these project numbers potentially could come down. Certainly, our technology producer that we worked with felt that the cost of the facility was on the high side, but we felt that at this stage of a planning-level study, it was better to be more conservative, and we also reminded him that we are operating in the state of California, which is a fairly robust regulatory scheme in terms of permitting facilities like this. So while these numbers, we're confident that these numbers are both conservative and realistic, and potentially, with further analysis, costs could be perhaps less than identified. But for the study, we're very comfortable with this number as a flexible, or as a feasible determination consideration. We did take a look at this conceptual site and the considerations of the materials, the equipments, the engagements, the traffic, the air and water issues, and using CEQA initial study checklist that the county identifies for its evaluation, and the city has a similar initial study checklist, we effectively subjected the conceptual site to the considerations. There is also a statewide effort to facilitate local review of biodigesters through CalRecycle, the state agency that primarily manages solid waste and works with cities and counties on solid waste issues, to come up with sort of a, an environmental template for reviewing biodigesters that can complement and supplement local initial study checklist. So those two documents were utilized in evaluating the environmental dimension of this facility. And we looked, of course, at impacts, both impacts through construction and operation, and of course, the cumulative impact. And not surprisingly, there are potentially significant issues identified in a project like this, principally air quality, biological, and archaeological resources in its construction. And there are potential operational impacts of air and water quantity through its operation. However, at the level of analysis done and as identified in the detailed study report, there are roadmaps to mitigate those, so that they would be not as significant. The cumulative impacts would have to be determined as we got more, as a project got more realistic and more defined. But essentially, under the filter of the study done now, the conclusion that was reached technologically was that no potentially significant impacts were identified that were fatal flaws. Then we looked at how would you deliver this project? If it had traction in one or more agencies, or a private group, or a co-op, or whatever combination of project owners stepped up to the plate? And we looked primarily at, well, we actually looked at over nine potential project delivery models, and we narrowed it down to two. A design bill-operating-finance model, which could operate either private or public ownership operation and financing, and then a public-private partnership that is anchored in public low-interest financing on the capital side, and either presumes multi-agency, joint powers, or a co-op. And there are reasons, pluses and minuses, as identified in the study from all of these projects, but ultimately, the conclusion was that a public-private partnership with the benefits of low-interest financing and socialization of benefits and costs would be the most optimal way a facility, under the constraints and opportunities identified like this, would make sense in this watershed. And then finally, our last technical memorandum was to talk a little bit about implementation schedule and economic business analysis and some potential ways ahead. First, the schedule. As detailed in the report, it's a little hard to read at this level, but as you can see here, about 50 months, 49 months, from start to finish, assuming everything went well. There are some contingencies built into this. I would suggest that the most important challenge, much like writing a constitution is critical before you start adopting laws, would be the question of project ownership. You know, who's going to step up to take this study into a project? And that's yet to be determined, if at all. We looked at economic analysis and net present value and IRR rates of return, and the conclusion is, is that what this project, under the constraints and opportunities, is most sensitive to economically, is financing costs and tipping fees. And when we say tipping fees, we're not really simply limiting into tipping fees because there's potential revenue from the electricity that would be potentially generated from a project, the energy from the project, and potential revenue from the digestate that would be the byproduct of that. However, we identified very conservative assumptions about those revenue streams because we just don't know until further analysis is done. In any event, the conclusion that was drawn by our economics individuals, or AECOM's economics analysis individuals, was that a alternative that was grounded in low-interest public financing and at a tipping fee that is roughly equal to the current tip-fee charge in the market rates here for organic waste in the Ventura River watershed, would indicate a potential feasible project in this watershed as defined in the study. And you can see that in terms of the distillation, and there are several of these charts in there about alternatives where the cash flow pencils out under the operations. And again, this is without the benefit of additional analysis of the revenue generation from the digestate, for conservative analysis purposes. So, as indicated, we've reached the point now of a final, a draft final feasibility report. We've got that on our website, as indicated here. We are continuing to accept comments, and our intent is to finalize the study in August and then submit to the state Department of Water Resources as our deliverable under the grant. And one of the things that we looked at in terms of potential steps ahead is that whatever group of potential project owners, or advocates, or champions that might emerge, or already is there, would need to look at some more detailed evaluation of market analyses of the feedstock, the digestate, and carbon credit issues. It would be helpful for a pilot testing and demonstration component to be evaluated. And we certainly think more work should, can, and would need to be done on how would this project, or something like this project, advance handling several TMDL issues, the nitrification, the nutrients, the algae, that are very much on the radar scope, radar screen of the state and regional water quality control boards for additional regulation. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Sure. How many horses are there in the Ojai Valley? Twenty-five tons of manure sounds like, I thought if there were 500 horses, that would be a lot. And I'm just amazed that we're the...
I'm going to, the most specific analysis is in the body of the report, but I'm going to ask Bill to address that because one of the things that Bill's group did was survey, and we always wanted to be careful when we survey folks, you know, we're from the government, we're here to help, and then someone gets slapped. So, Bill and his group did some survey work, and I'll ask him to address that question specifically.
Thanks. Yeah, we did a survey starting about six years, five years ago, and we counted horses that we knew, mainly at horse ranches or livestock areas or boarding facilities that were easy to count. We couldn't go house to house and find people had one or two horses, but we ended up with 2,500 horses. And that's just in the lower Ojai Valley. If you go to upper Ojai, there's more. So, in the study, they assumed about half of that would be collectible, and they used about 1,200 horses for the estimating of this thing.
And 1,200 horses generate 25 tons a day?
Yeah. They're really good.
That's a lot.
Horses have one of the most inefficient digestive systems. So, if you want more details, I can tell you. At any rate, they, it's about 30 to 35 pounds a day of solids and probably another 5 to 10 pounds of urine.
Thanks. And another question, another thing that comes to mind when I'm looking at transporting 25 tons of, or 50 tons, how are you going to transport that? Because that's a lot of trucks. That's the only way I can see to get down there unless we bring back the railroad or something.
Some of the waste stream is already subject to the Harrison Collection stream. We can't tell you precisely how because that gets to the question of what the folks who are not now subject to that stream, how much is volume in there? So, that is, that is very much a critical question as part of this facility. In theory, this facility is best operated if it's a magnet and attracts, rather than something that adds costs and headaches and problems. In reality, if a facility like this has traction in this watershed, it will have to mix and match what it does. The energy production and the digestate revenues may help reduce the tip fee. And then that becomes more palatable to deal with the waste, especially if the state and local regulatory agencies say to those folks who are creating the manure, "You will now pay the following," or face a fine. So, we don't, you know, all of these things are in flux at this point in time. But what is certain is the state and local water boards are very concerned about nutrient loads in this watershed. And ultimately, I have found that when the state takes a look at the problem, it's usually at the latter stages, very blunt, and it says to a local city, county, water district, usually at the constraint point in which all the waste flow, "It's your problem to go deal with, manage the waste locally, and all these tons of horse owners and cities and counties and whatever, and then you figure it out." I, who knows how this is going to play out, but that has generally been the way the state handles this type of problem. And unless we come up with a local solution, and Bill will talk more about that as well, with this being one element of the potential one, I think that's likely to happen. It's only a question of how drastic and how quickly, or how long it takes.
I'd just like to say, when you're doing your environmental studies, you'd have to include not only the air pollution from truck traffic, but just the volume of traffic.
Absolutely.
Because we're, I mean, that's something that constrains us here in the city.
Absolutely.
We can't even put in a housing development that's going to add even one trip through Citi Springs, so...
Right.
I think that may be actually a major constraint on anything.
I would not disagree with you. And whoever owns the project, if it becomes a project, will have to grapple with that issue.
Thanks.
I have a question. The waste that's removed currently, is that taken to landfills? Do you know what happens to that?
Portions of it, from dedicated organic stream components, may be taken either to the Ojai Valley Organics Facility. Portions of it may be taken to Aggraman, and what's left would probably end up in a landfill.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions. So, I'm curious about the current practices of the horse owners. I mean, how much, how much of this waste? I haven't had a horse for a long time. What are, they can't just leave it on their land, right? It doesn't just go away. What do they do with it if they don't have it hauled off?
Well, in fact, it is left on the land, and the fact that it's left on the land, or either applied beneficially even on the site, potentially is the problem of the runoff. And so, while they are currently handling it in that fashion, and I want to be careful because it's not a normative judgment here, but just a descriptive situation, the regulatory agencies that are looking at the nutrient loads that end up in the river say, "Too much is coming via the current way it's handled or not handled." And that's not going to be tolerated. Okay, so, the question is, what are they going to do about? And to the, and there's two approaches to that. The Ventura Resource Conservation District is working cooperatively with local horse owners on improving in situ handling of wastes. And there are ways to do that. There are ways to not necessarily make it go away, but to constrain and contain the potential for it to runoff into the river, or at least reduce the volume and therefore the impact of what does runoff into the river. That may be the cheapest solution. It may be the most expeditious solution. The question is, will it be the most efficacious solution from the regulatory point of view? And that's an open question. But that effort is underway, and the Ventura Resource Conservation District, as well as Bill's group, are working with horse owners, and he can talk to you more about specific examples. And I would suspect that certainly in the next two, three, five years, that's probably going to be a more developed solution. Does it get to where the state regulators who say, "There's too much nutrient coming into the river right now, and you've only reduced it by 20 percent, we want you to reduce it by 99 percent"? That's, who knows? That's an open question.
Okay. Speaking of the nutrients, you know, I read through this report, and it basically discussed the carbon cycle. So, I'm wondering, what happens to the nitrogen and the phosphorus? If you have this biodigester, what happens to the nitrogen and the phosphorus? Is it made it as nitrogen, nitrogen gas, and then just vented out, or it doesn't explain the phosphorus? So, what's the fate of these nutrients if you have a biodigester?
Digestate. The nutrient that comes...
So, in the solid form?
That's right. And that, that has potential social utilization and economic value as a soil amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that we, so that's clear, the two potential revenue streams is the methane that's produced, that can be then turned into energy or facilitate energy, and the digestate. But more work has to be done about both of those streams to determine, is it, in fact, capable of reducing the tip fee? Because if it is, it becomes more attractive economically from a holistic standpoint. It becomes more towards a magnetic approach. The information done so far suggests it could be, but we can't say it is yet without that additional analysis, which was one of the next step discussions that we had.
And I just want to clarify, your study did not handle an alternative to the digest, to this biodigester. I guess my question would be, if we don't do this, how are we going to meet the Water Quality Control Board's TMDL goals?
We don't know the answer to that question for the reasons that I identified earlier. First and foremost, we don't know yet precisely what the, what the regional state water quality control board's target numbers are going to be. And that's in flux. They suggest a very draconian reduction. I've heard 99 percent reduction. That would have major impacts to the operational, economic, daily lively culture in the valley that generates those wastes, or at least continues the processing of that waste. It may not be that draconian, or it may be draconian, but it's attenuated over 30 years for reasons of economic and operational situation. So, that's very much an open question. And as I indicated, in the short term, this in situ treatment is probably going to have a lot of traction. But does it get to where the regulators want you to be in the calculus of the entire watershed? I certainly am not wise enough to answer that question.
Any other questions?
I just want to make sure I understand the definition of the tipping fee. I'm assuming it's the difference between the revenue generated by the biodigester and what it would actually take to run the operation.
Right. What a tipping fee would be, would be the economic value of whatever an individual or a waste hauler pays at this facility to dispose, to take that nutrient waste and turn it into energy and digestate. So, the more revenue you get on the back end, the lower the actual operational cost.
That includes the hauling, the collection and delivery to the biodigester.
That was estimated in the summary, or part of the...
Yes.
Yeah, I have a John's question. You know, how do you get all the 40%?
Yeah, this has become a question more than, more people are asking. The tipping fee includes the actual collection of the manure from the ranch and delivery to the biodigester and dumping it there. That's, yeah, and so, at $35 per ton, this project's feasible. But if you look at what people are willing to pay right now, it's less than 20, $20 a ton. So, the willingness to pay says that this isn't feasible yet. So, anyway, that's, hopefully that helps.
Thank you. All the questions.
And Mr. Chair, we, so there is a second presentation, and Bill has already approached the podium a couple times, but he's going to be giving a presentation on a different take on the issue, the biodigester facility. But Bill is a representative with the, with a local group entitled the Waste to Energy Community Group, and he's representative of that. He's also the owner of Next Gen Engineering, which is an engineering firm here in town, and he's been working on this for several years, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you, Rob, and members of the commission. We, 2008, 2007, another engineer, Phil Sherman and I were talking about this water quality problem. I said, "What can we do with all that horse manure?" And the engineers, you know how we are, we try and think of some way to get something out of it. And we, and Phil is a big guy on anaerobic digestion. He understood that process, and he said, "Well, you can get some energy out of that and make some beneficial, you can sell it, make some money. You know, it's not really waste." And so, that spurred on a lot of conversations, and some other friends in town, we formed a kind of a group to try and promote this idea of getting something from waste and recycling it. So, and just because of the order of events here, I'd like to follow up with just a kind of clarification on the benefits or the byproducts. There's, there's three products that come out of anaerobic digestion. One is gas, methane, and some hydrogen gas, and that can be burned for energy. Then there's a digestate, a solid that comes out. And when it comes out, it's just like goo. It's thick, and it's anaerobic, so it smells bad. So, that's the stuff you have to aerate, and, but once you aerate it, it can become, you could sell it at any, at any nursery as a soil amendment. You know, it's a good, it's got, it's rich in nutrients. Then there's also a liquid that comes off called a supernate that is rich in nutrients as well, and that could be used as a liquid fertilizer. So, there's, there's those byproducts, and as Gerard said, the market of those, marketing of those and the cost benefit of those hasn't been studied really. So, and the TMDL regs, I don't know how familiar you guys are, but that's kind of the hammer that's driving some of these issues. How can we reduce our nutrient load in the watershed? And we think the carrot is a biodigester, that you can actually get some benefit out of these nutrients. So, just with those, we'll enter kind of in-between conversation between our presentations. Let me start in. Let's see what I do. Okay. The Regional Water Quality Control Board has pulled together the best information they could find on what are the sources of nutrients in the Ojai Valley. And as you can see, the urban areas, the city's going to have to deal with this with their stormwater permit. There's horse and livestock have a big chunk. Open space, well, nobody, who's going to pay for things from Los Padres National Forest? Then there's a nice target there, the Ojai Valley Sanitary District. That's, they've got target written all over them. By the way, as a disclaimer, I'm on their board. And so, we're dealing with how to reduce the nutrients coming out of the wastewater treatment plant. And there's agriculture, septic systems, some small amounts of groundwater discharge and atmospheric deposition. But the second biggest piece of the pie is horse and livestock. And so, the regional board's given horse and livestock owners kind of a mandate to come up with a plan to reduce their contribution to the nutrients in the river. And they've, and they've taken that to heart. A number of them, a couple of them are on our committee with the biodigester. They've also formed their own Horse and Livestock Watershed Alliance, and they're working with the Resource Conservation Service to come up with ways to build buffers between them and the river, and manure management plans. So, anyway, there's, there's efforts on really to, to hit that second piece of the pie. But the regional board is after that whole pie. They want to see reductions in all of those areas. So, if they haven't talked to you yet about some area you represent, they'll be coming to you. So, the impacts to the Ojai Valley of nutrients, and like Gerard said, it's a multidisciplinary problem. It affects water quality, stormwater and groundwater. It affects air quality. Now, we're alert to things like greenhouse gases, odor. People complain about odors when they drive by some of the horse boarding facilities. It's a land issue, land planning. Takes space and waste in the area where we have landfills, it takes space in landfills. And as one of your questions was, what are they doing now with horse manure? Some of it's actually going into the Harrison bins and just hauled off to landfills. But, but anyway, it's part of the picture here. Then energy. It takes energy to haul or spread manure right now, whatever they're doing. They'll hire, a horse owner will hire somebody to haul their manure to another farm or orchard where they can spread it. So, there's already, there's existing energy input into hauling or spreading of manure. And there's increasing pressures to take action, and this is where the Strategic Planning Group from the county is good. They, they track these trends, and we feel them, those of us involved with at least the water resources. First is, I think, the TMDL, total maximum daily load for nutrients that affects algae. And this, this is, most people were dreading what that would really be, but the decision that came down in December 2012 was, gave people time to adjust. For sanitary district, they have 12 years or 15 years to adjust their effluent. For horse owners, they have, they have some time to form a group and a way to meet the new TMDL regulations, and they have time for special studies. So, it didn't come down as a sledgehammer all at once. It's a bit soft. And the pressure costs, money's, you know, with that recession, we, everybody became cost-conscious. The costs for disposal have gone up, capacity of landfills has gone down, cost of energy has generally gone up, and hasn't gone up as fast as some people predicted, but the cost of energy still has an upward line on it. So, what actions are being taken? And we've alluded to some of these. There's the MPDES stormwater permit that the cities and urban areas will be facing. So, the city of Ojai County, unincorporated areas where there's a defined urban area, those, they'll be dealing with nutrient reduction. Then there's this algae nutrient TMDL for the Ventura River that's driving a lot of this. And then there was a flow diversion TMDL that EPA wanted to limit or guide or, yeah, limit how much people could pump or divert out of Ventura River in order to control water quality. And this, this is a huge issue for people and water resources and water rights and things. But that one, that one kind of blew by this time, and that TMDL was said to be satisfied by the algae TMDL. So, you can see how these different angles of regulation affect each other. Now, the non-regulatory efforts that are being done, one's this Horse and Livestock Watershed Alliance. They're, that, that's a group I promote. Anybody who has a horse now, there, I recommend they go see them because they're talking at a ranch level, what you can do right now to compost your manure or keep it away from the stream. It's very practical and doesn't cost much and doesn't need years of planning or construction cost. So, then there's the biodigester that we're working on. Then there's a number of organic farmers and people who limit the amount of fertilizer they use now, and partly because of the cost of fertilizer and the trend toward organic farming, there, people are a lot more conscious what they're putting on their fields. So, one solution we spoke up for is the idea of this anaerobic biodigester. It involves the potential to generate energy. It would improve water quality. It improves air quality. It's sustainable, it's flexible, but is it feasible? And that's what everybody said, well, Bill, this is a good idea, or, you know, anybody in our group, that's a good idea, but can you pencil it out? So, that's why we needed help. We needed a grant, we needed a consultant, somebody who really knows this stuff to, to say, hey, what, what are the numbers with it? And so, that's what that report is, is it's really answering the question, is it feasible? Or at what cost would it be feasible? So, after the feasibility report or where we're at now, we've seen that the tipping fee is more than ranchers want to pay. You know, it's feasible if you can get 35 bucks a ton, but I, people we've talked to are more at the level of 17 acre, $17 a ton. And that's what, there's a program in Norco, California, that that's about what they charge, 17 bucks a ton, and they haul it off and compost it. So, the plant needs an owner. Now, this is a huge deal. We've, we got volunteers putting time in it, thinking that the biodigester is a good idea. We, the county and the Ventura River stakeholders think it was a good idea, at least, to take to a feasibility study, but nobody wants to own it. We don't have an owner. And so, at some point here, we've, we're just trying to tee up this information so that somebody can take it at some point when somebody can pencil it out or is more feasible. So, it's kind of a critical point. You know, integrated waste management, you know, is kind of keeping their hands off it. It's, it's, it's a project that's waiting to find a home. It's kind of like Tetris, you know, where you get wrong shape, coming in the wrong place. And it's not quite package right, right now. But we're limited, we're constrained by how the grant says to do it. We have to focus on one site and, you know, complete the feasibility study as it is. So, we feel like we've got a number of answers to people's questions, but we don't have an owner yet. The collection system, who's going to do the hauling? That's, as you asked. We don't envision everybody loading up their pickup truck and driving down to the plant and dumping it. We, we included in this project a collection, somebody would collect it and haul it. So, the collection system needs a hauler. The plant site, the site we selected is fairly expensive, and it probably needs more synergistic benefit. It needs to be located with some other partner, maybe down in the oil field area or with somebody else that, where we could get a better synergy. The regulatory approvals are complex, and one of the most difficult is air quality. And you'll hear that from people at Tolon Landfill who've just, their biosolids and energy production project has just gone through a lot of steps, but they're almost there. I think they've got it permitted now. So, anyway, there's a complex regulatory approval process. So, next thing we'll be looking at is grant writing for further studies, and we'll consider coordination with other regional efforts to deal with bio-waste. The ownership issue, when we first started, we thought, well, a co-op would work. Horse owners could band together, hire a hauler and build a little digester in the valley. Then we came up with numbers of how much manure there was, and, you know, the little digester isn't very cost-effective, and so, it, it's become a little bit more than a private co-op can, can handle. A public agency would have a better opportunity, I think, to, to actually manage this, and it needs to have the authority to deal with solid waste. And then, it's always possible to have somebody else come in, somebody from Georgia or, you know, back east, say, well, here's an investment opportunity. Then we get stuck with a Golden State issue, and we definitely don't want to do that. And so, we kind of throw out these ideas on ownership just to, to help people think about it. So, the action steps, and again, this just follows, we're, we're going to recommend and support, anyway, the county's study here to study for the market, study the markets for byproducts, do pilot testing or demonstration projects. One of the guys on our committee built a six-foot-high biodigester, about three-foot diameter, in his backyard, and, you know, it produces gas, and he can cook, cook his barbecue on it. You know, so I think part of it is just educational process. And then compare, one of this, is a very interesting thought of comparing the biodigester with other nutrient TMDL actions, even if this thing was feasible at $9 million. That, could, could that replace what the sanitary district has to do for $15 million? Could that replace what the cities have to do for whatever costs they have? So, if, if you look at the total actions to reduce nutrients, maybe this fits in. It could be horse traded a bit. Huh. Oh, and then I wanted to put in regional efforts for nutrient removal. There's certainly efforts in the city of Ventura to deal with food waste, and, you know, maybe we could get a deal there with food waste and horse waste. That makes a better mix for biodigesters. So, there's, Limoneira has a biodigester going in, and that's for ag waste. And, you know, there's Gill's Onions down there in Oxnard that's taking onion waste and already has an efficient biodigester going. So, questions? And I've listed some of the people who've spent time with us over the years. Marlene Luckman used to be on your commission. She's since moved, but it was, we'd get together for coffee and talk about it. And by the way, I think I need to say now that I do not get paid for work on the biodigester, that somebody asked if I was getting money from the county or AECOM. I'm not. This has been just a long-term community involvement, as well as these other people. We've just donated time. So, at any rate, open it to questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just have, thanks, thanks for the help, the work that you're doing in this building. It's amazing amount of work. It's really something to take on. When we start talking about methane as a byproduct of this thing, I start worrying again about air pollution and, and global warming and so on, because I understand in its raw form, I think methane's actually more dangerous for the atmosphere than carbon dioxide.
Right.
And when this stuff comes off the biodigester, is there a cogeneration kind of thing for electricity that'll burn that methane, turn it into something else?
Yeah, that's, that's a good thing to think about, that right now, when the horse manure's out in the field, methane's just going up in the air. If you could collect it and get it as fresh as you can, give it, give as much an airtight plastic container as you can, deliver it to biodigester, then there's the potential to capture that methane and burn it for energy. And so, then, then you get into the byproducts of that burning process, and that's nitrogen oxide issues. And those, that can be scrubbed, it can be cleaned up. So, there's ways to actually reduce the amount of methane going to the atmosphere by collecting it and running it through the biodigester. And so, that's one of the incentives, I think, if we could get some greenhouse gas credit, if there's a market for that, then these kind of projects would be more likely to go ahead.
Sir, do you know why it's, Germany has really adopted a lot of these?
Yeah, they have. You know, one of the engineers working on this project was German from AECOM. It's fun to talk to them. They have, they have areas where there's a lot of dairy and horse manure that's kind of distant from, but anyway, it's, it's been an efficient way for them to, to get their communities heated and, and energy for light. So, part of it was just their infrastructure, that they did better by having more local projects that dealt with their own waste, their horse waste and livestock waste. And there's something in the German environmental laws that really made it attractive, that if a community takes care of its own, recycles its own waste and uses them, then they get credit or less tax on them. So, there's a financial benefit for the communities that could reuse all their waste. But, yeah.
And I just wanted to elaborate on, on that last point. And just as the synergy of a project like this is greatly facilitated by co-location with other processes that either could use the byproduct or needs the byproduct or could add value to the byproduct, the conscious decision of the German government to create a regulatory and public policy framework that brings the concept of local handling of local waste with local benefit is huge. And it really does bring to sort of the word made flesh manifestation of let's be self-reliant. And that concept triggered the innate German engineering point of view to develop a distributed way of this, which also has other benefits. If you don't have all of your eggs in one basket, you're less amenable to problems. Or at least you can manage your problems more cooperatively, collaboratively, in a constraint-contained situation. So, we're not there yet in the United States, although there's increasing number of folks advocating that. But we'll, but that is a key point.
I guess, Bill, I'm just wondering, how, how has the county in general responded, county government responded to your presentations? And is it encouraging you? Are they showing that they're supportive in any way, or?
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, the county's helped. The watershed protection district has really taken on this idea mainly because of the nutrient problem, water quality problem. But the integrated waste management, they're not so interested at this point, so it's not that high on their list.
So, the idea's floating right, the point is to get the idea floating out there and see where, where the next steps might, might take, might take us as a whole, huh?
Yeah, one more screen on Tetris, I think. Needs a little bit of wiggling. And I, I think, you know, generally, it's, it's raised a lot of good issues, you know, about reusing our waste and energy and water quality, so.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you both for most informative presentations on a very real situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number three, discussion item, the workshop on revisions to the city's building height limits, the recommendation to receive a presentation from staff and provide feedback on the extent of the changes, building heights that should be brought forward for the public hearing process. I'll turn it over to staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone, again. During recent discussions of the work plan priorities for the community development department, the city council requested that staff bring forward the concept of revising, and it was even more of a clear directive, I think, from the council. They were very interested in pursuing revisions to the maximum allowable, allowable building heights. And they discussed this at their, at a recent meeting on June 25th and provided some input for possible revisions to the city zoning code. And they also wanted the planning commission's input on, on several items, and so, staff brought this forward as a workshop item initially, but as it goes through the process, assuming planning commission's supportive of the, of the concept, then we would get into a public hearing process with the planning commission and then ultimately also with the city council. So, at the council's June 25th meeting, the council directed staff to investigate lowering the maximum allowable building height for single-family residential zoning districts in the city to 25 feet, with limited exceptions for towers, chimneys and other architectural features. And they also talked about the need to have a, an exception to the 25-foot height limit for certain architectural styles that may have high pitched roofs. And that's one of the things we're hoping to get input from the planning commission, both tonight and as we continue to move forward with this, is just how would that, how should that be written in terms of architectural exceptions for things like steeply pitched roofs or certain architectural styles? The council also wanted feedback from the planning commission and, and input regarding height limits for the city's non-residential zoning districts, and in particular... height limits for the city's non-residential zoning districts, and in particular the village mixed-use zoning district and the general commercial, both of which currently have a 35-foot height, height limit for projects. The business professional, another non-residential zoning district in the city, has a height limit of 30 feet right now. And so the council was interested in, in, they didn't really have a position on the non-residential, but they wanted some discussion by the planning commission as to whether the commission supported any changes to those zoning districts. So again, at, at this evening's meeting, I'm looking for direction from the commission on three things, essentially. One is the changes that were recommended by the council for the single-family residential zoning districts. The second is whether any other changes should be made for the city's non-residential zoning districts. And the third is, is, as I mentioned earlier, guidance on the allowable, on how we would structure exceptions to this 25-foot height limit for the single-family residential zoning district. Staff will incorporate the feedback from this evening's meeting and that we got initially from the city council back on June 25th in the form of a draft zoning ordinance text amendment. And then we'll, as I mentioned earlier, we'll bring this back to the planning commission for a noticed public hearing. And then eventually that would go on to the city council for their own public hearing on that. In addition, the commission's aware that one of the primary motivations in this latest housing element update, the 2014, 2021 housing element, is to, is to take another look at the height limits for the SPL overlay, the special housing overlay for the higher density housing sites. And there was a lot of community support for, or a lot of community opposition, rather, for the fact that under the SPL overlay, the feedback that we got from state HCD staff was that we could not restrict the height to anything less than three stories, 35 feet for the SPL overlay. So that's a separate effort that's going to be part of the, it's a, it's a big component of the housing element update. Tonight, at this workshop, we're really looking at everything else, the, the single-family residential zoning districts, the, and then the non-residential zoning districts. And what I've done with, rather than rehash a lot of the issues that were presented in the city council staff report, I just included that as, as an attachment that had a little bit fuller discussion of the issues. And then in that also are the tables out of our zoning code, which have the current development standards for the various zoning districts and have the height limit identified for each zoning district. And then I've also, as part of city council discussion, we provided some elevations of recent projects that had been approved or at least seen by the planning commission that had components that exceeded the 25-foot height limit that, for the concept that was floated. And that includes the Jim Miller property on East Ohio Avenue, the new community hospital remodel, Ohio Valley Community Hospital remodel that you saw not too long ago with its new features, and then the, the Wild Tennis Academy project. And I have those elevations as part of your staff report. And then the last thing is, the second attachment is the minutes from that city council meeting where they, it's an excerpt that talks about their, or summarizes their discussion of the revisions to the city's building height limits. So it's really meant to be a discussion, informal workshop. We weren't sure what kind of a response from the public would have tonight, but it is not the very beginning of the process, but an early step in the process. And, and the council was very, very clear that they, they did support the reduction for the single-family residential, and they deferred to the commission for the non-residential zoning districts. So that's all I have for staff report, but I'm happy to go into any additional detail if the commission would like.
Any questions for staff?
It doesn't look like we're going to get much public input on this, Rob. Have you had any comments from the public?
You know, I really haven't, and it's, this was not a newspaper notice that we ran in the, in the paper. We will do that for the public hearing, but there's, as you're all aware, there's several members of the community that do regularly check in on the planning commission agenda, so I'm not sure why we haven't had more public input at this point.
So, Rob, is there some particular output you're expecting from us tonight?
Yeah, it's, it's what I'm hoping, and maybe you can take each of these one, one at a time, but the, the three main issues for the commission to weigh in on are, first, do you support the changes that were recommended by the city council for single-family residential zoning districts, limiting that to 25 feet as a, as a height limit? The second is whether changes should be made to the, to the maximum height limits for the city's non-residential zoning districts. And then the third question, or the third area for input is, is whether the commission has any thoughts or ideas on how we might craft an exception for architectural design that results in, for example, steeply pitched roof? And maybe have some parameters in terms of, you know, how much higher they could go? Or what percentage of the, of the building frontage could exceed the height, those, those sorts of parameters? I know many of you are, are design professionals, actually almost all, all of you are, are, you know, on the commission and have, have seen a lot of projects and have a pretty good feel for different designs that may come before you, different architectural styles. So those are the three specific things that we're looking for input on.
So a lot of, a lot of projects will come obviously up for design review. So if there was anything in it where the height, say there was an architectural feature that went above the 25-foot, that would be discussed to the discretion of the commission, correct?
Yeah, any, any major new construction or even major additions that, that involve non-residential properties generally comes to the planning commission for a design review permit. And then even for residential, any multifamily comes, anything that's in a R2 zone, for example, even if it's a single-family residence, could be reviewed by the planning commission. It would at least need a director's exemption. And then even in a single-family residential zoning district right now, there's, as you know, a design review permit requirement for anything that involves a, a second story. And one of the things I noted to the city council that I, I want to reiterate for the planning commission is that we have had several projects come forth that are, that are, that don't involve a second story, floor area on the second story, but use a architectural design that's pretty tall and pretty bulky. And we have administratively implemented a threshold that if, if even a single-story project exceeds a certain height limit, and it's generally 20 feet, that just because of its bulk and its size would, would still go to the planning commission or could still go to the planning commission for a design review permit. And we've had a few projects like that, and they've been challenging, but we've made that zoning code interpretation, and the council acknowledged that, and that they were supportive of that concept.
You're speaking now specifically of single stories with that?
Yeah, what I'm saying is-
Discretionary call.
Correct. I'm saying that even single stories, if they're unusually high, would still come to the planning commission for a design review permit based on a zoning ordinance interpretation that, that, that we've made.
Rob, and so to be clear, on the residential presently, the maximum height is 30 feet? Is that correct? If I'm reading table two, three correctly?
Right. So it's, what it says for the lower-density single-family, it's 30 feet and two stories are both specified. When you get to the, and that's, that's true across the board, that's for all our residential, including the multifamily.
Right, and the reason I, I brought that up is if the height limitation was 25 feet, you, you obviously couldn't do a second, a third story within 25 to 30 feet, so that would accommodate for any architectural features. So essentially, I'm, I'm pretty good with what we have on the books right now. I think it gives, gives us the flexibility to have that additional, you know, five feet for an architectural feature or say a different pitch on a roof, without having to go into detail onto what specific, I think that could be almost limiting, the wording could be almost limiting if we, if we did have to go in and prescribe what features, what heights would be allowable.
I can, I can agree with you in that it can tend to be, unless it's clearly defined, very, pretty restrictive. So, so my, my mind's eye here, if you, let's, I'm visualizing a two-story house. And today, you know, it's rarely do you see eight-foot walls, you know? 10 and 12 foot is, is far more common. And so if you just take a 10-foot, if you build up a 10-foot wall, two-story, you're going to have 10-foot at your first floor, you're going to have at least 12 inches between your first and second floor, another 10 feet, you're already at 21 feet. If you take a, a building or a structure that's 30-foot wide and you apply a 612 pitch on it, that's roughly adds six inches per lineal foot, which would be half the length. I'll blow through the math here, but essentially what it does, it adds about seven and a half, eight feet to the roof structure. At that point, you're talking about 20, closer to 28, 29 feet, and, and you've overstepped the, the 25-foot proposed rule, which may make sense in context. In a two-story, we, we've got to remember, we have the authority as a design review commission to, to input and, and shape what the, what that looks like. So I think it becomes a combination of, in, in that sense, I don't think the 30-foot rule is, is, is restrictive and is a little less onerous. Allows for a little more creativity, allows for creativity in the design of the structure. And as Rob pointed out, there are several structures throughout the, the city that, you know, would exceed this 25-foot rule. So a lot of it comes down to aesthetics, function, human scale, which I think we'll probably touch on tonight, and, and the understanding how all this comes together and to, 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 to limit ourselves to a specific height, I think is a little, is, is a little onerous. There may be a point there if we want to, let, let me give you an example of a project I'm working on now, because that's probably the best way I can explain it. I'm doing a project through the county. It's a, there's a hillside ordinance involved that has very restrictive height limits. You can't even do a two-story in a particular, because it's on a ridge line and this sort of thing. What they've done is, is fairly creative, though, in terms of allowing for some creative use of height limits. They allow a certain percentage of the roof area, the total roof area, to extend beyond those, the, the normal height restrictions. Okay? And so in this case, I believe they allow 10% or 400 square feet of a residence to extend above a certain height limit, 10% or being that of the contiguous roof area. Okay? So what this allows an architect to do is grab an element, whether it be a tower element at an entry or some fashion of architecture, besides a chimney or, or your standard, you know, elements that extend beyond roof lines, above roof lines. So something like that may work, especially in the context of a, of a single story. I think that's maybe where the rub may come. You know, I mean, a 30-foot single story is, who does that? Nobody does that. But to think about that in terms of those height restrictions, I, I just think it's important to keep this in mind that we have to be very careful as we move forward in terms of actually assigning a specific height. And I tend to agree with Kathy that the 30-foot rule is probably right in there, and it works well for two stories. We, maybe we need to discuss the single-story option a little more, since that doesn't necessarily come, is not mandated that they come through a design review process with us. It's done evidently at a discretionary level. So I'd like to explore that, that area as well, so.
I'd like to point out that if you look at historical buildings, a lot of the old Victorians had very high ceilings, 10 to 12 feet, and that was for ventilation. And I think, you know, going forward at some point in the future, we may want to go back to that. The eight-foot ceiling is kind of an artifact of the fact that we have air conditioning and all the sort of modern conveniences. And I think, you know, at some point, we may want to go back to that. So I would, there's some buildings here in Ohio, I'm just thinking of one at the corner of Gridley and Grand, that's an old Victorian that is, I don't know how high it is, but it's, it's right up there, well over the 25-foot height limit, I'm pretty sure. And it's a beautiful building, so I would hate to do anything that would prevent that from happening. Another thing, Rob, I used to work up in Monterey area, and in Carmel, they have a whole design ordinance there, because a lot of sites are sloping. And what they do, you may know this, they, they take the average of the roof height. So they'll take the ridge height and the plate height, and halfway in between becomes your building height. And that way, you, you have the option to have a really steep pitched roof or a really low pitched roof, and you kind of get a better sense of how high the buildings are actually going to be.
Well, I'd like to add, I, I think Mr. Nolan makes a very important point. If we, if we reduce the height limit below 30 feet, then we're going to have to come up with, I think, a little more, it's going to become more complicated. So I think in general, there's, well, the city council initiated this, and so I think we need to seriously take this on, how can we implement this? So, okay, so let's start with that. And then in order to implement this fairly, I think we would end up with something more complicated. So this is a cost of, of doing business. I think in general, if we, if we think now, the process we have now, there's a design review process. And my problem with that is it's, it's so flexible that it doesn't provide any certainty. So this may be where the city council is coming from, saying, well, gosh, you'd, you'd let anything go, you'd let anything happen. And so I, I wasn't part of the city council discussion, so I'm not really sure where this is coming from, what their fear is. To me, it seems like there's, they're afraid of something and they want to prevent something from happening, and I don't know exactly what that is. I really liked that workshop that we had with the joint, with the city council and the planning commission, where we were asked to think about, well, what is the, the real interest here? What, what's the sort of value? Where are we coming from that would end up with a, maybe a certain height limit? And, you know, the, the language I like to use is, is a human scale. If you're, imagine you're standing on the sidewalk and you're looking at a building or a structure. In order to be consistent with the sort of community feel that we have, we have, okay, it's a village, we think of our town not as a city, but as a village. And so I think this height limit is part of that, that community feel that we want to maintain. And so I think that would represent itself in a certain angle- And so I think that would represent itself in a certain angle that if you, if you looked up at a structure, you wouldn't have to, to look, you know, too, up too steeply to look, to see the sky over a structure. So there'd be sort of a human scale, you wouldn't be dwarfed by that. So I think if we had to lower this height limit, we would somehow, and I don't have the exact language on this, but maybe there'd be a certain angle, or a certain, probably better to define, a certain height from a setback. In, in my opinion, we could accomplish this human scale, and maybe with a, tolerate a greater height if it were set back. Whereas it might be intolerable and unacceptable if it were right at the, at the front of the property. Whereas if it were set back, it probably wouldn't be any problem at all. So I think that's probably how we could accomplish this, this general intent of the city council.
So would it be developing a setback-to-height ratio? And then, I guess, what, would we have to do it per district? Or like the R0, R1, commercial, I'm not sure. It might be a little complicated. I'm not saying that it's a bad idea, but I'm, I'm just wondering if that's how we would approach it. Because we have such, you know, each district is different.
I, I think the human scale becomes particularly applicable in the context of commercial use. Looking at the context of the Ojai Avenue, let's say. I, I know we've gone, we've seen projects where they have proposed frontage two-story right on the avenue. I had, I brought a project in here one time, and the best thing that ever happened was the planning commission told me, no, you can't have a two-story ride on the, on the front street. You had to step it back, and it really turned out really nice. And I, I appreciated that, the, once I had that information. But point being made, said is that in, in the context of the commercial frontage along Ojai Avenue, or in our downtown area, I think it becomes really important to specify and define those parameters, you know, the step back, the heights, and to allow flexibility at the same time. So human scale definitely plays a, a big part in all this.
Yeah, I think Stephen, you bring up a good point. That Sunito is an excellent example of something that, you, you came in and it was all within the parameters of the zoning, the first one. But we all looked at it and said, no, that, that's not acceptable.
It was too closing.
Yeah, it was. And then I was also thinking of Ron Palito's building down here on Ojai Avenue, which we went through, as far as I know, five different proposals on that. And I think part of what we were reacting to was that same human scale kind of element to things. Because he was originally proposing to run the same kind of profile as the Oaks Hotel has, you know, down Ojai Avenue. And we looked at it and we said, that, that doesn't look right. You know, it really was too much for, for that site. So we ended up with something that is, is much lower scaled. And I think that's part of the process that goes through here on the planning commission.
It seems we tend, tend to paint ourselves into a corner when we try to dictate or create a over, an overall, in this case, height limit that plays into different districts of the, of the city. You just can't not separate the residential factor from the commercial factor, from, you know, so on and so forth through the city. So really, from my, from my perspective, I think we need to almost attack it as, as in neighborhood districts, you know. And that would be the most efficient way to do it. And this might play into this mixed-use idea that, that Rob brought up tonight, how we might address height issues, you know, with, with SPL and that sort of thing. But to just have a blanket statement of an overall height, I, I don't think it's commendable, you know.
Yeah, and oftentimes, oh, sorry, go ahead, John.
I was just going to say, if Commissioner Crabtree would hear, he would say, that's a form-based code. That's what we want. It's something like that, that isn't, doesn't have any specifics, but says, within this district, here's what the building should look like, basically. People work within that.
It also, I think, pays a big, plays a big part in the lot size, too, and how the building is set on the lot. You know, you brought up with the Oaks and Ron Palito's, where the Oaks is set back from the street, and Ron's is on the street. So you can get away with that height more to the rear and to the front. And that's where the human scale comes in again.
So taking that a step further, Commissioner Nicklin, let's take an example like the Miller property, which has a very deep lot in it. I can see the, the, the property adjacent to the avenue having a lower, you know, height limit. But as you go back, what's to prevent us really from going higher, stepping it up? And it wouldn't be an aesthetic eyesore if done properly. So context of the property is so important. The use comes into all this as well, so.
I think a lot of people in Ojai, too, are very aware of the view of our mountains and from the streets, from the city streets. And that's, I think, a lot of the, the concerns, that we're going to block our background away from our downtown. So again, the setbacks and the way the buildings are and the way they designed, you know, creating windows of vision as well, so you don't block that out.
Well, what if we at least tried to accommodate this intent of the city council by saying that, and kind of picking back off of your idea where there's a certain percentage of the roof area that could exceed that? What if we said that, say, and I'll just throw out a number, what if we said that 50% of the building had to be, could not exceed 25 feet, but the other 50% could potentially go up to 30 feet? So that would be a way of, of, you know, halfway achieving that, that goal.
It's a tough one, because, I mean, not only would we potentially be looking at districts, but a lot of times, each site, depending on, on what is adjacent, what buildings are adjacent to it, or maybe even the view shed, could actually be an exception to that rule.
And then the other idea would be a, a certain setback. And, you know, I'm not sure exactly what, what number to say, but if it were, say, I don't know, certain, if you were 50 feet back, then it seems like you should be able to go to 30, 30 feet. But within 25 feet, maybe you could not exceed 25 feet at a certain setback.
Yeah, I almost think we would need to study this a little bit further. I mean, I would have a hard time tonight saying, let's do, come up with the numbers. I think we'd have to really look at it a little bit further. Maybe there's a study that would need to be involved if we decided that's the direction we want to go in.
I would also like to see, if the city council is really worried about this height problem, I'd like them to come to us with some specific examples of things where they think there's a problem. Because as far as I'm concerned, I don't see a problem. But there may be something that they're concerned about that, that we're not aware of.
Well, one, one thing that we can do is convey this discussion to the city council, and then ask them for some additional input, either as individuals or, or bring it back to the council. And then you'll have a little bit better understanding of, of some of the concerns. You know, I know that there, there's definitely a concern with the SPL overlay, and we are addressing that with the housing element. But I, I did hear at that city council meeting that there was a concern with a single-family residential. But they didn't have the benefit of hearing this discussion, the planning commission. And maybe that would, would have some influence as to where they're thinking. So I don't, I don't want to, I think it's, it, it sounds like this might be a good one just to continue and to try to get some, some, bring this input to the city council, and then come back for more, for more discussion, if they feel that it's necessary. They may just say, let's focus on the SPL, and that, that'll be the battle that, that we'll fight. So that's, that's an option. Don't feel like you have to do anything tonight if, if you're, feel like there's a need to do more discussion or get more input from the council.
What about the three-story question? How does that, is that playing, is that playing into this, you think, this?
Three-story?
Yeah, yes, I mean, we don't really have limits, I mean.
Well, all right, so for the residential, we already have on our zoning code, single-family residential is a max of two stories, 30, 30 feet. For, and that's true for multifamily as well, the R2 and R3 zone district. The SPL, the three stories is an issue, and that's something that we're going to address as part of the housing element update. And then for the, but for the non-residential, there are, in our tables, there are just height limits that don't necessarily specify two stories or three stories. So there is an opportunity, if the commission feels it's, it's appropriate, to bring forth a clarification or a change to zoning code regarding being specific on how many floors are allowed in various zone districts.
Mr. Chair, good evening, everyone. It's a workshop, so I'll just, maybe I can help you have a little insight to what we, why, what we wanted you to look at. The first thing and foremost was that there was some thought on the, on the council that we wanted you to tell us whether it was feasible or not to restrict residential, particularly R1, to 25-foot height limit. Simply because of the, the lower height, the lower mass, the lower scale, would keep it more in tune with, with what we would consider to be the village-type architecture or atmosphere. That's it. If it's not feasible, and what I'm hearing is it kind of handcuffs you to limit it to 25 feet, then I think that's what the council needs to hear, that the planning commission believes that 25-foot height restriction, even in R1, is too restrictive for architectural amenities and things like that. And I kind of, I kind of sense that that's what I'm hearing. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is that the code allows for a 30-foot, single-story dwelling. Now, Rob had said that, that that's a, single stories are discretionary, but that he has kind of this unwritten rule that if a single story goes above a certain height, then it'll be brought to you. But, you know, the code doesn't really say that. So I would like there to be, maybe you consider what would be a height, a reasonable height limit for a single-story dwelling in an R1? Or when should it come before the planning commission if it's above that? You can either limit it to 25 feet, maybe for a single story, or whatever is reasonable, 20 feet. Or if it's, leave it at, at 30 feet, and if it goes above that, then you have to bring it before the commission. I would think we'd want to put a limit on it, though, of something less than 30 feet. Then it goes, the next step goes to the non-residential zones, the commercial zones, where we allow 35 feet. And technically, within 35 feet, you could have three stories. And the principally, the majority of the, of the council believes that Ojai should not have three-story structures. And if we shouldn't have three-story structures, then what do we do, even in the commercial zone? Do we bring the height limitation down? Or do we leave it where it is and just specify, we're only going to allow two stories? But do we want to allow two stories within 35 feet? Or do we want two stories in 30 feet? And we're thinking mostly, and, and just pointing to some of the properties, like the Miller property, that's right on Ojai Avenue, with very little setback. The code would allow them to put a 35-foot structure there, right now. So we wanted to get your input on that. And then last but not least was, in these SPL overlays, where the state has pretty much dictated 35 feet and three stories, it's, the three stories is only a mandate if we can't get to our, our low-income housing numbers with two stories. But it still allows for 35 feet and three stories. And that is something that we would prefer not to have even in the overlay districts. So that's kind of what we wanted your feedback on. Not real complicated, we weren't looking for a lot of specifics, just, you know, if it's not feasible to drop it in an R1 from 30 feet to 25 feet because of the architectural considerations, as, as Steve referred to, that's, tell us it's not feasible. That's kind of the input that we're looking for. Any, any questions? Okay.
No, Mayor Blatz, the Miller property, I don't know what the current status of it, but it hasn't approved. Is that plan currently approved to, that was, you know,
Yes.
Passed many years ago?
Yes.
And I believe that frontage on that, well, that's one of your examples, right, Rob? What is the height on that, on that tower? It's right on the avenue.
I scaled it off the plans when this came to the city council, and I am not 100% sure, but it was definitely over 25 feet. I think it was, it might have been 28, 29, 30, something in that level. But that's right on East Ojai Avenue, and, but it's just one component of it.
Right, yeah, exactly.
And, and for instance, the component of the hospital remodel, you know, that's not objectionable at all, even though that's, it's higher. You know, there's certain things that, that don't add to the massiveness of a, of a project, in my opinion, anyway, and I can only speak for myself. There's certain things that aesthetically add to the project, and they might be a little higher, you know, not including chimneys and things.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Rob, earlier you had mentioned if a single-story residential project came to you, and it, I think you said if it, if it was over 20 feet, or give or take, I guess it's kind of loose.
It's, it's a zoning ordinance interpretation, and it's, it's not exact, it's not set forth in the zoning ordinance, but we actually have documented, this is the, this is the procedure if we get one of these in.
Oh, you do? So it is?
We're going to refer it to the, it's a zoning ordinance interpretation that,
Okay.
That we have a few of those filed, so that we're consistent in the application. And I, I'm, I'm sure that it was a 20-foot trigger for, all cases would go to planning commission if it was 20 feet or higher. And I think we said in certain unusual circumstances, where there may be, you know, a difference in, in lot topog, in lot grade from one property to another, that it could even be as low as, as 15 or 18. So we, but we have a, we have a zoning ordinance interpretation that we're, we're utilizing now when these projects come forward, and the city council expressed support for that. So I think what Mayor Blatz is suggesting is, let's take it, the, to be real clear for everybody and just incorporate it into the zoning code itself.
And, you know, I went and looked at some of my projects, and specifically at single stories with open-volume ceilings in it, where they wanted, they wanted the volume of open beams and taller walls and all that. I think I went to about three or four projects, and the tallest one was like 24 feet. And at 20 feet, you're, you're pretty, you're pretty up there. And it's, it's almost like an inner tower element type of thing. But it worked, it was great, good architecture. But that said, we could, I, I believe safely say, 25-foot rule for a single story would work for, I can't imagine going much taller unless you're building a silo or something. But that's a lot of volume. 25 feet is ample for any single story.
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to us coming up with a number for that single story, whether it's a 25 feet or something else. And I agree with Mayor Blatz. Then it'll be consistent, I mean, there could be a change in the planning commission and change in staff, but it, there's longevity and ensures that in the future, into the future. But Stephen, I probably would refer to you, being an architect, with that number. I mean, at this point, the 25 feet, yeah.
Yeah, it, it raised my interest to research it, and it's, it's a lot of volume. And as far as a single story is concerned. Now, applied to a two-story, that's another, that's another game, yeah, so.
And then I guess, and then the other question would be then for the, you know, the commercial or non-residential. Do we want to write in maximum two stories? I mean, that still could be the 30 to 35-foot limit, but it's the amount of, height limit, but that's the amount of stories. Is it two feet? Or are we open to it being greater than that?
I frankly don't understand the objection to three stories, per se. I mean, I can understand the height limit. But if it were 35 feet, and two stories, 35 feet and three stories, I don't, I don't know why somebody would want one and want, not want the other. I really just don't understand that. My objection would, what I think would just be about the height.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a good point.
With commercial buildings, there's a lot of volume inside.
With commercial buildings, there's a lot of volume inside the building, you know, often, whatever the production's been done, or whatever, they're looking for volume inside, so you could still limit it to the two-story, but, you know, you've got your inside space, it's giving you the volume, you know, and you design something like that.
So, could you clarify that one more time for me, I'm, I'm going to be sure I understand.
Sorry. What I'm saying is the, in a commercial building, we're talking about the thirty-five-foot being three stories. But if we limit it to two stories, you still have the volume of the inside space, which a lot of times, commercial structures need, you know, whatever type of production that's going on inside it. You know, I see your point of, the open volume space, yeah.
Excuse me, a mezzanine or something surrounding that, so it creates volume and,
Yeah.
Without exceeding the three-story.
So if it's a printing business, they have the machinery, and it runs up higher inside the building, so they, they need that, that thirty-five-foot limit often. You know, if it's, if it's a flat-roofed structure, like a lot of commercial buildings are, that's the point I'm trying to make, is, but, you know, your point, about the three stories, if it's thirty-five feet, and you fit three stories in there, it's, you know, a difficult one, yeah. So, do we want to make a decision on single story and hold the others over, or how do we want to go forward with this?
Well, it's just really a discussion workshop, so, I mean, I, I guess we could, do we concur that, that we could safely, we all feel good about the twenty-five-foot rule for a single story? Is there any objection to that from the commission?
Sounds good.
Okay, so.
I do object to it, but that's okay.
Is there a specific reason, or is it just the?
I just, I don't want to screw around with the height limits right now, so I'd like us to just leave everything the way it is.
The corollary question to that is another thing that Mayor Blatt alluded to, is, is this practice of our zoning ordinance or interpretation, do we want to change our zoning ordinance, the thresholds for design review for single-family residential structures in a single-family residential zone to trigger planning commission review of a design review permit at a certain height limit? Do you want to codify basically what the staff interpretation has been over the last couple of years?
Well, that would be an option to the twenty-five-foot rule that I just put on the table. And I think that's what John is differing to, is just maintain status quo.
Maintain status quo, and then,
With the twenty-foot kickover.
That would be the trigger for it to go to, to planning commission, which I would be okay with.
Yeah, I think you can have both or either. Either, you know, either a twenty-five-foot height limit for a single-family residential, or just a trigger for design review by the planning commission if it goes above twenty feet in most cases, and in extenuating circumstances, fifteen or eighteen feet, and we can flush that out some more, and bring, obviously, we'll bring that back, because it's a zoning ordinance amendment, or you can have both of those. You can, you can specify, we want a twenty-five-foot height limit for a single-story residential. And then if, in addition to that, if it's a single-story residential that's twenty feet or greater in max height, then that needs to come to the planning commission for a design review permit.
Well, I just want to make an observation, that if, if no one is building a single-story house greater than twenty-five feet, then we don't have to prohibit it.
That's true. I guess if someone were, we would want to see it, you know, we would, yeah.
This might be redundant, but taking to the next step, but what happens when you're on a sloping lot and you have introduced split levels? How are we addressing those issues? Maybe the, the split level is going up additional four feet, and it's the back portion of the structure, and it kicks it over the, is it from the grade that we're, that we're measuring this? I mean, that goes back to this idea of medium roof.
Yeah, it's in your, it's in your packet, page eight, eight dash eleven, there's a imaginary plane parallel to the grade, where the maximum height, as you step down, kind of follows the, the line of the grade. We also have hillside design guidelines that can kick in in certain sloping lots that prescribe some additional review and, and additional standards.
Yeah, that totally answers the question, I didn't, I didn't see that diagram there.
Well, my, my suggestion to, said to the city council would be that we would, we would, well, I'll speak for myself, everybody else can say what they want. I would support a twenty-foot height trigger would go for a design review to the city, to the planning commission. If a residential structure were proposed to be over twenty feet, then it would require a design review. And further, I would oppose lowering the height limit of the residential below thirty feet. And if the city council really wanted a lower, a less than thirty-foot limit, then that would end up with a fairly complicated formula to satisfy that.
Well, I'm in agreement with the, the twenty-foot height triggering the single-family residents coming to the planning commission, but I would keep the thirty-foot height. So essentially keeping our, the way it is, but just adding that extra clause, just to get it on the books, so to speak.
I think that's the same thing that Commissioner Osborne was, was recommending.
And I would support that, too.
I can support that as well, and if the city council wants to tell us differently, we can take it from there.
Okay, so that addresses single-family residential, and then the other issue is, is whether any changes should be made to the non-residential zoning districts, and you talked a little bit about that. You know, one thing I would just add to the discussion is in the industrial zone, there are, there are unusual uses that may need thirty-five feet for one story, so if, if there's a desire to, to either reduce the thirty-five-foot height limit for the general commercial, or the VMU, or both of those, and/or specify a, a two-story limit to those zoning districts, I would say you may want to consider the industrial separate and perhaps, you know, think, think if there's really a need to, to change the industrials, just in a small area of town, it's kind of in a low area anyway, where there's not a lot of view impacts. And by the way, the view impacts would be part of any new building coming forward for a design review permit, as well as the SEQA process, we have to look at, at view sheds and view preservation. Regardless of who's sitting up here at the, the dais, there's still the opportunity to, to look at the environmental impacts through SEQA.
I think I would support the thirty-five foot, but keeping it to a two-story, not a three-story. That's my feeling on it, is keeping it.
Could you please explain why there's the number of stories, like, like thirty-five-foot, two stories is okay, but thirty-five-foot, three stories is, is not okay? Could you help me understand that?
I just feel it just detracts from, if, well, it's in a commercial zone, if you've got three stories, you, I feel you might be opening a precedence to other structures around Ojai. You know, people sometimes say, well, there's three stories there. It is an industrial zone, but why can't we have three stories here? I just feel in Ojai, if we can keep, you know, we, we talked early on about our town, our, you know, the village effect of keeping it a two-story effect, I know thirty-five feet is high, but it's again, it's the way the building's designed, the aesthetics of the building's designed. And it's just, you know, keeping the, the, the beauty of, of Ojai. You know, even, even, you know, we have a small industrial area, it's still keeping Ojai, Ojai, that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from on that.
I would actually sort of concur with you, Commissioner Osborne. If we have a thirty-five-foot height limit, I don't know if we care what happens in between there, how many stories are, I don't know why, why it would make a difference.
Yeah, you know, it doesn't make any difference, I see, I see exactly what you're saying, but for me, it's just the aesthetics of the building, seeing three sets of windows up, and, and maybe getting back to the human scale thing, too, that, that's where my feelings come from on that, so. I, I see both, exactly the point, you know, both points, it's just, I think we, we have to make a decision on.
I, I guess I'll weigh in and, and don't feel that these height limits should be changed, as, as they're written here, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, ultimately, for me, it comes down to the design review. Because that's, each project is unique in, in and to itself. Depending on where it is, its context, the many, many factors, and to blanket with a specific height for any of these uses, whether it be commercial or institutional, or whatever it is, I think we have to look at that side, and that's why it's coming before us in a major way, the first, in the first place. So I'm for leaving that aspect of it alone, in terms of the height limits.
Well, I'm kind of going back and forth, too. I, I tend to agree about leaving the height limits in the commercial and the business professional. The only alternate that I could see would be, once again, going in, you know, almost area by area, district by district, and looking at the setbacks, and once again, doing that maybe setback to height ratio, which would require some work and a study. I'm not opposed to that. But generally, I do like the flexibility of the existing, what's on the books presently.
And I think you bring up a point, an important point, Kathy, and that's, we need to address it district by district. We know that we, none of us would probably be real happy to see a two-story, thirty-five-foot building on Ojai Avenue, it's not going to happen. It could be proposed to us under this. But at some point, we need to address the parameters, as, as John alluded to, in a form-based manner, that, that tells people, that tells designers, architects, developers, this is the direction we're going with this. If you're going to go to this height, you're going to have to step it back this far. If you're going to do this, you're going to, you know, and the only way to do that is to get specific about it more than what this discussion will entail tonight, that's for sure. And I think we've always, it seems that when we have these discussions, we're always coming back to looking at the individual districts throughout our community, at one point or another, it's going to have to happen, so.
And I'll just add to that, because I think it's important for the discussion, so as, as the commission's aware, the council earmarked thirty thousand dollars for a neighborhood planning study of some sort, hire a consultant, and, and so we have funds in this year's budget, this year's fiscal budget, to do that. And the, because there's, the idea actually came out of the planning commission, what I was expecting to do, and it's a little bit later in the agenda when we talk about future agenda items, was to bring that item back for discussion before the commission to help flesh out the scope. What's, what's really feasible for thirty thousand dollars? Would we just look at one neighborhood, would we try to look at a couple different neighborhoods, maybe a residential, non-residential, and come up with a template and, and have a, a, a plan of attack for these neighborhood districts? And I, I, I think it's totally unrealistic that thirty thousand dollars is going to do the job for the whole city. So I think we have to start with one or two areas, develop, utilize the community forestry management plan to give us guidance into how to geographically go about things. So that is happening, and that's going to probably come back to you in your second meeting in August to help develop that scope, because I'll, I'll really benefit getting the input from the planning commission on the scope for that assignment.
So, are we going to leave it as it is?
Well, unfortunately, it appears that we're sort of divided among ourselves about this non-residential. I gather that we're all comfortable with the current height limits, and not interested in lowering the, the current height limits. But I think we're divided with respect to the, whether we should further restrict the number of stories. Because I, I am, at this point, favoring keeping, favoring, I would favor allowing three stories and keeping the current height limits.
I think what we're hearing now is a need for some sort of, like a form-based code kind of thing, where we, we kind of specify what's going to happen if someone comes in with a project that they want to actually go thirty-five feet high. I think all of us feel like it would have to kind of be stepped back somehow, and we would need to kind of specify that one way or another.
And it's possible, in that context, in a form-based context, that three stories will work. Could easily work. It's, I think I'm leaning towards to leaving it less restrictive, just, just based on that. But it's going to require us to dive into this, this district, describing these districts, how we like to see them be played out architecturally, for sure.
And the bottom line is, it's going to be a design review anyway, so, you know.
Yeah, I think it's, I think I have enough information to bring back to the council on this. I think, actually, you got consensus on, on several items, the, the only thing there is a little bit of disagreement on was whether there should be a change from no specified number of stories to two stories in the general commercial and VMU. So we'll summarize this for the city council, and then they, if they feel that they want to take the issue further, then we can. If not, we'll come back with just those, that, those few small changes that we talked about this evening as, for a public hearing, and the minutes will reflect that. So next meeting, when we have the minutes of this, review those carefully, make sure that's what, what you all felt you had either consensus or a strong majority opinion on, and then we'll provide that to the city council.
Thank you.
You know, if I can just add another comment, when we go into this consideration about the neighborhoods, I guess what, you know, I just learned this morning about this, the, basically, the city has a severe constraint in its growth potential because of the traffic impact. And so, I guess I don't want us to spend a lot of time on, you know, on, on these rules that really won't matter, won't make any real difference. So I guess I'd, I'd like to hear from staff in the future discussions, where is it likely that we're actually going to have projects? Where, where should the focus be? Because it, it seems like we're not going to get a whole lot of projects of any kind, so I'd like to have some kind of idea from staff where we anticipate getting, getting projects in the future.
I, I can give you an idea of that now, if, if you'd like, and I think what Commissioner Osborne's referencing is our general plan policies that are very, have a very low threshold for what traffic a project can generate and still be approvable by the city. It's a very strong language in the general plan, it says the city's council shall deny projects that worsen traffic impacts down on Casitas, down in Casita Springs by the Edison Curve. And the county, in the unincorporated area of Ojai Valley, has, has a similar, they have almost exact language in their general plan. So the two, county and city have for twenty-five years had these policies on the books, or thereabouts. And, and it is a very strong control on growth, it's, it's, it's not quite a moratorium, but it's pretty close to that. It's not quite a moratorium, but it's pretty close to that. Now, the, what types of projects can come forward without that? There's an exception for affordable housing projects, so that's, that was, came out of a previous housing element, I think it was a 2000, 2005 housing element. We had to provide an exception for affordable housing. If a project, if a parcel had a building on it and a use that was generating traffic in 1988, then those trips can be credited against any new project or any remodel of that project. So you'd have to look property by property, what was going on in 1988, and properties that had something going on then have the ability to bring forth a new project and still be running acceptable to that policy. The other thing is the policy says that it's for trips that can't be mitigated. So there are certain types of projects that can specify mitigation measures that would reduce trips, and there have been, any of these projects would require a traffic study that would talk about the effect of the mitigation measures, and that's how some of these projects have gotten approved in the past, like Los Arboles, like the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa addition. They had very aggressive traffic mitigation measures that were applied, and that was, allowed them to be able to do something. And then what we all have talked about is part of, as a, as part of the housing element discussion is, in the new housing element, there's this concept that I floated, that I think there's some support for, where we look at a new program that would allow a residential mixed-use overlay to be applied to specific sites within the city that may be blighted sites, they may be sites that the city is interested in seeing something happen there. What we're hearing from the development community is that it's difficult to do a straight housing project on those sites, it's difficult to do a straight commercial project, but that they would really appreciate the opportunity to do a mixed use. We don't allow mixed use in our zoning codes. So this program in the housing element, this concept that we're going to be discussing over the next several months, is a way to allow mixed-use projects happen on specific sites that the city council will choose, just like they chose for the SPL overlay. It can be two sites, it can be 10 sites, it's up to the city how many of these sites we are designated, and then the concept is that totality of that project then would be exempt from the traffic policy because it's providing affordable housing. So right now, if, for example, Jim Miller wanted to come forward with an affordable housing component on his project, take advantage of the SPL overlay that he has, the only thing that's exempt from our general plan policy are the residential units, and they would have to be affordable. If he wanted to redo his project and do something bigger with commercial, then the commercial trips right now would still have to go through the analysis and make sure that they're not, that they're not worsening traffic. That's true also for the bowling, not, yeah, the bowling alley facility that was included in the SPL overlay. They want to do straight housing, they could do that, but if they wanted to do a mixed use, then would have to look at the trips that they had in 1988 and discount that against what they, what the new project would provide. So there's some opportunities. It's not an out-and-out moratorium, and then, of course, single-family residences that are going in, or in some cases, a one-to-two lot split might not go over that traffic threshold, but we're not talking new subdivisions, we're not talking brand-new buildings that are, you know, have a lot of traffic-producing qualities. It's pretty limited at what we have, but with this mixed-use overlay, that would provide an avenue for certain properties to be developed in that concept.
Thank you. Everybody done on that item? We'll move on to the informational items, director report and director actions.
Well, we, fairly busy month since we last had the schedule of director decisions. We've, we had a, issued a temporary use permit for the Nordhoff High School fireworks display on July 4th. We had some signs that were approved and a couple tree permits that were approved. And as far as other things of note, the most important thing to note, and I don't know if the newspaper ran a press article on this yet or not, I know we sent them a press release on Friday, I believe it was, but we have Heather Waldstein, who's our assistant planner, started today, was her first day, and she's going to be here three days a week, about six hours a day, and she, she didn't run screaming from the building at the end of the day. She actually did really well. I think she got a good flavor for what the city of Ojai is about, and she's really looking forward to helping out in our department, and I think she's going to, she's really talented. She's got a very strong background in both current planning projects or development review projects as well as long-range planning, and she's done some, quite a bit of environmental analysis and consulting, so she's really well-rounded. She's, she's worked in various cities, all the way up to the senior planner level, including very challenging environments like West Hollywood and the city of Beverly Hills, or a couple places where she's worked, and City of Brea was another one where she had a pretty long tenure. So we're really happy to have her. She's not going to be bored, and we'll, I told her that we were having a planning commission meeting this evening. She said, you know, maybe the next one I'll come and be introduced, so the old, but as you come into city hall, ask Sheri if Heather's in so you can meet her and introduce yourselves. So we're happy to have her, that's exciting. I think the commission knows that we're now, we've changed our hours at city hall to eight to five, Monday through Friday, and a few staff here at city hall have shifted over to 40-hour work weeks from the 36-hour work week that many of the staff have been under and some still are under since the early 90s as a result of the last recession. There was a reduction in staff salaries that coincided with the change of the schedules from 40-hour weeks to 36-hour weeks, and I think at the same time, they went to four-day a week for city hall. So the council has been interested in being open five days a week, having more staff come over to a 40-hour work week, and we just haven't had the finances to be able to do that until really this year. We started it a little bit in previous years. So we're, we have new hours now, so don't come to city hall at 5:10, door's probably going to be locked, but I think it's helpful to have the 40-hour work week match up with the new city hall hours. So that's another thing to be aware of, and we're going to talk about future meetings at another agenda item, and so there's a, well, we'll talk about that soon. Am I missing anything important? I think, I think we covered it. So, and I really think the discussion that you had tonight was very thorough, very, very well-thought-out, and we'll just pass that on to the city council.
Thank you. Item number five, current code enforcement activity.
Yeah, we're continuing to close code enforcement cases at least as fast as they're coming in, so that's good. We're not getting a backlog forming, and over this last period, we closed five cases, which is about a fourth of what we have on the, on the books that's active right now. So that's going really well, and we're getting, I think we're having even more success at the voluntary compliance level early on with just a phone call or maybe initial site visit, so that's, that's good, that we're not spending a lot of resource on, resources on addressing every single code enforcement issue that comes along. It's just a small minority that take staff resources or take more than just a little bit of staff resources. So that's, that's been, that's been going well.
Thank you. Item number six, our future agenda items.
Okay, a few changes in addition to what you have in your packet. So August 7th, it says potentially cancel. I am going to recommend that we actually cancel that meeting, and instead, we'd like to have a special meeting that would focus on the 2014-2021 housing element update on, and I apologize for the day of the week, but it's Friday, August 9th. That's one of the few days that worked for our housing element consultant. So if that all works with you, put that on your calendar. The focus will be the housing element update, but if there's any other development review cases that are ready, and I'm not sure we're going to have any that are ready for that meeting, we probably won't, so it might just be the housing element, but if there's anything else that we need to put on the agenda, we'll put that on the agenda. And then for August 24th, that's, I would like to add the neighborhood planning scope of work discussion that I mentioned earlier on the 21st, and then we'll probably at that point have at least one or two development review projects ready for discussion. So we're going to have the joint workshop with the city council in September, and it might be good to wait on the water, fish, and landscape ordinance until we have that dialogue with the city council, until you have the dialogue with the city council. So that may get shifted to September 4th or the second meeting in September, but the, I have a sense that the 21st might be a fairly busy agenda, and you can see the pending projects, there's four of them. We actually got two wireless applications in, for CUPs, and one is just adding panels to the existing monopine at Maricopa Highway, the Caltrans yard across from Vons. There's one carrier up there now, and there's a second carrier that wants to co-locate. And the second is a, is a new site on Grand Avenue. It's a singular wireless application, and they're proposing a mono eucalyptus tree. So those are still in the incompleteness stage, they haven't been deemed complete, and we're reviewing those, but they, one or both of those may come forward on one of these future, upcoming meetings. And then we have a second-story remodel and addition design review permit on Crestview Drive that's probably will be ready by August 21st.
Thank you. Planning subcommittee reports.
All right, I'll just give a brief one. On Complete Streets, we actually met today. We typically meet the first Wednesday of the month, but because several of us were on vacation, we met today, and our next meeting will be September 4th. We're going to skip August because of that little time constraint there, and we meet from 3:00 to 4:30 PM here, city hall in the conference room, open to the public. And basically, what we're working on is, I'm just going to make it pretty brief, is we're working with our, with Greg Grant, our public works director, and he actually presented us with this wonderful list of over 10 items that, some of which he's got funding on or plans to get funding on, and for instance, he had a couple TDA grants, one from 2012 and 2013, both for $50,000. One of them is for making improvements on the bike path crossing where the road intersects, and that also includes signage, so we're really excited about that. And then the other one is working on crosswalks on Matilahaw, where the farmer's market is, and also on Aliso Street. So those are two of the ones that are active at this point, and I won't read them all because there's quite a list, but I'll, I'll keep you updated as we move forward. Those are the two probably most prominent. And then we are planning to apply again for the Strategic Growth Council grant, and this coming Tuesday, I'm going to be attending the workshop with possibly one or two staff members. That'll be July 23rd, it's going to be at the Ventura Skag office, and they're going to be going over the whole application process. I'm going to be doing that, so I can report back, let you know how that goes. That's it.
Thank you. And our city council liaison, Blatt.
Hello again. Chair Nicklin, commissioners, thank you for your input on the, on the issue of how high the stories, you know, our height limits. I'll, that'll come back to the, to the council, and I think you did a great job discussing it. I'll be able to explain it well to the other council as well, Rob. I don't have anything other than to say thank you, and I'm going to be with you the next three months, which is a pleasure. I haven't been the liaison to the planning commission for a while, so I'm looking forward to it. And I do remember when Ron Pletto's project came forward because I was on the planning commission at the time. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer it. If not, just thank you, and you have no idea how much we appreciate the work you do, and I really thought the workshop the other night went well. Thank you.
Thank you. That during the meeting.